Good evening. After we have our pledge, I will have a moment of silence. For Richard Ashner, former town of Walke, DPDW employee, past commissioner, past fire police captain of Mechanics Town Fire Company. Winfield H. Smiley was a dairy farmer of the Smiley Farm and longtime resident of Walke. So we could stand up. Thank you. I would like to have two public hearings. We referred to one would have. The target you want to be getting that answer.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Walke on March 23, 2023. At 7:25 PM at Walke Town Hall, 99 Tower Drive, Building 10, Middletown, New York. Which time the town government's public comments get them for those projects to be considered for funding under the 2024 Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program. Under this program, a variety of physical improvements as listed below are eligible for funding. Acquisition and disposition of real property, public works, public facilities or site improvements. Code enforcement, housing and health codes, clearance, demolition, rehabilitation from public use or economic development. Housing rehabilitation loans and grants, special projects for elderly and handicapped, provision of public services, shelters, clinics, senior nutrition, et cetera. Payment of non-federal shares of other grant programs, relocation payments and assistance. Planning, management and program administration. The town of Walke being considering projects to be submitted to the 2024 Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program. The deadline for that is March, I'm sorry, June 23, 2023. And now, filling the notice for us in Spanish.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Por favor, tome nota una audiencia pública que llevará a cabo este 23 de marzo de 2023. A las 7:25 de la noche en el Ayuntamiento del Pueblo de Walke, 99 Tower Drive, Middletown, Nueva York. 10941. Esta audiencia es ofrecido por medio de las oficinas del ayuntamiento del pueblo de Walke. Las oficinas de ayuntamiento les invita a dar comentarios y sugerencias públicas con referencia a proyectos que podrán ser elegibles para financiamiento por medio del programa 2024 Orange County Consortium Community Development. Bajo este programa, una variedad de arreglos físicos serán elegibles. Adquisición y disposición de bienes y inmuebles. Obras públicas, instalaciones públicas y desarrollo económico. Complimiento del código vivienda y salud. Despeje, domicilio y rehabilitación públicas para un mejor desarrollo económico. Proyectos y subvenciones para la rehabilitación de viviendas. Proyectos especiales para personas mayores de edad y de capacitados. Provisiones de servicio público como abrigos, clínica y nutrición para personas mayores. Pagos que no sean federales, subvenciones, pagos de reliquias y asistencias. Gestión de planificación y administración del programa. El pueblo de Walke considerará proyectos que sean enviados al programa 2024 Orange County Consortium Community Development hasta el 23 de junio de 2023. El pueblo de Walke hará todo lo posible para garantizar que la audiencia sea accesible para personas con desventajas. Si necesita ayuda o asistencia esencial, por favor comuníquese con la Secretaria Municipal.
Thank you, Madam. With that, we'll go up to the audience. Step up and.
Just note, Mr. Supervisor, just now for the record that the notice was published in both English and Spanish as provided and required by law. And perhaps Commissioner could, just before this public comment, give a quick summary of what this year's application might be for.
Commissioner?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Yeah, what we commonly refer to as the CDBG, Community Development Grants. We have been very successful over the past 15 or 20 years of receiving these grants on either an annual or a biannual basis from the county of Orange. We've done numerous improvements to sidewalks, drainage. We ended up putting the bathroom up with the Washington Ice Park. What we're applying for now actually is the 2024 funding. And what we're going to do with that is we're going to be either relining through trenchless technology and/or replacing drainage in the Northern Woods section of the town. It's about a 30-year-old townhouse community over in Mechanics Town area. And this is a two-year program. And we're pretty confident that hopefully we'll receive the full amount of funding, the 175, because we've got very good luck with not only receiving the funding, but actually yesterday there was a mandatory webinar that Michelle Baker, our grant administrator, sat through. And there's actually municipalities out there that have had funding from 2018, 2019 that have not completed their projects yet. We have a very good track record of completing our projects, not only on time, but we use what's called forced labor, which is our own internal labor. And what that allows us to do, it allows us, it precludes us from grid value rates. And we basically do about twice as much work for about half the amount of money. So it works out very good. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You step up, please identify yourself and address. Anyone in the audience?
Hello there. Do you want to first and last name?
Yes.
I'm sorry, very new to this. I'm Matthew Trishen. Do you need that spelled? It's a new. I'm sorry, I'm very new to this.
Oh, you're speaking regarding the public hearing is regarding.
Yes, I would propose we need no turn on red signs on Route 211. Because the way it works, you have these little signs where there's a little white.
On the side you. Yes, if the public hearing based on the public hearing we just opened up. You'll be able to speak on that in a minute.
I see.
Okay, so on that, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Okay, like you said, make a motion to close the vote here. Second.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serana?
Yes. Thanks, public hearing. I'm creating a local chapter 196. I have Madam Clerk give the announcements.
Notice is here by giving that there has been introduced before the town board of the town of Walke, a local law entitled "A Local Law Creating Chapter 196 Short-Term Rentals" of the code of the town of Walke. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Walke on March 23, 2023, at 7:25 PM at Walke Town Hall. 99 Tower Drive, Building A, Middletown, New York. To consider the adoption of the enforced introductory local law. Any resident of the town of Walke is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law at such public hearing. Copies are available for review at Walke Town Hall, 99 Tower Drive, Building A. The town of Walke will make every effort to ensure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and/or reasonable accommodations should contact the town clerk by way of the town board of the town of Walke, Louisa Ingrassia, town clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I will note that the notice of public hearing was published and posted in accordance with the law. Thank you.
Okay, so you can step up, please. State your name, address, and regarding, want to speak on this law.
Hi, my name is Kelly Norton. I'm from Norton and Torrey, which is in Goshen. I also live in the town of Walke. This looks like a lot of notes I'm bringing up here, but it's not. I will submit a comment letter to the clerks for the board, but I do want to address the board on a couple of issues just briefly. I'm here on behalf of the plaintiffs. They're my clients. They've lived in this town for about 25 years. Their property and their neighboring property, or their neighbor's property, excuse me, are located in the R.A. district, which is a rural agricultural district. It's always been a quaint, peaceful part of town, you know, it's always been surrounded by farmland. And anyone who lives in a rural area would be familiar with the peace and the tranquility that that kind of. That that kind of neighborhood offers. My clients have always cherished those essential elements of the rural lifestyle. Until about two and a half years ago, when their neighbor opened an illegal short-term rental. That's been operating, like I said, for about two and a half years. So during that time, we had sought assistance and enforcement from the town. And this law that's proposed, it falls short of that. I'm not sure if the town board is aware, but the law for you is actually verbatim of the law that was presented and proposed in the village of Woodbury. And I can tell you that because I drafted it. This law I drafted for the village of Woodbury. But Woodbury's law was tailored to the specific concerns, circumstances, and considerations of the village of Woodbury and the needs of that community. Woodbury hasn't adopted their law. It was introduced months ago. And they are making substantive and substantial changes to it based on their comments and the concerns that are being received. And we hope that this board does that as well. Walke is a different community. You've got different concerns. You've got different circumstances. And I think we can all agree that a law needs to be tailored to the community that it's for. So like I said, there's just a couple of points that I want to raise. They'll be more fully described in my letter. But the first is that this law that's proposed permits short-term rental, Airbnb, verbos, whatever you want to call in every district of the town where a single-family home is permitted. In every single-family home. So look to your left, look to your right, those neighbors of single-family home, those can be in Airbnb. The second point is that this law permits up to 12 overnight guests in those Airbnb. Short-term rentals. That's a lot of people for one house. But that's one of the overnight guests. This law does not take into account the people that come and they don't stay over. There's nothing in this law that actually protects against the structure becoming an event venue. So this law is really putting the financial interest of just a few of your residents over that of your 29,000-plus residents, including the businesses that you have here that legally operate as event venue. Despite the purpose, one of the purposes of your zoning code, which specifically states that it is for the provision of privacy for families. How can families have that now? Because what you're doing is adding a use. The use of a single-family residence as an STR is now introducing a new commercial business into your rural agricultural district and in all of your low-density residential district. The second thing, or third thing actually, is that this law has been improperly classified under speaker. At your last meeting, when this was before you, on March 1st, you classified it as an unlimited action. However, this changes the allowable uses by adding this use to more than 25 acres. It needs to have to be a type-one action. And a type-one action under the law is considered to be more likely to have a significant adverse impact on the law. Again, every dwelling can be used as an STR. Can your town's infrastructure handle that? That's water, that's road, that sewer. I don't know that you've looked into that. And that's something that definitely needs further analysis on all areas of relevant environmental concern. The last point that I want to really bring up is that this law that's before you right now actually expands your current noise law. It's not consistent with the laws that you currently have. So to comply with this law, my clients would have to be quiet, not make noise that goes off the property at 10:00 PM. But the party going on next door can continue for another hour. The neighboring property right now has already been rented out for parties and other events. And that's obviously going to happen on all other rentals that this occurs in, in the town. Because it only limits it to 12 overnight guests again, which is a lot. But it does nothing to limit any of the events that are going to be held there. So we would respectfully request that you keep the public hearing open while the town revises its law to address Walke specific issues and takes a hard look at the potentially adverse environmental impact. And we would urge the town not to rush the process and to give this important law the attention.
Thank you.
So before you leave, very interesting. And, you know, we have to start somewhere obvious. Because there's nothing right now that protects the residents in any kind of way. We don't have anything in regards to this, this type of law. So we're starting somewhere, square one. And I'm glad to see that we're starting with you, author of the original. Where is Woodbury with your additions and conditional change? What stage of the area?
They're still, they have scheduled the public hearing, but it has been adjourned for several months and not open because they're continuously getting comments. They referred it to the planning board, and the planning board is issuing a long report for suggested provisions. The building department as well. So those changes all have to be made and incorporated before they want to give the public something more concrete to consider and say, this is more along the lines from the starting point that we were at, which is posted online, to this is how far we've come. Now, what do you think? And if they need to make more changes after that, it will.
And obviously, that's a perfect view of public here, right? Hear from the public, get input from the public, and what we currently have and currently what we're proposing. So I look forward to your, to your comments. And you said you were going to leave them with us, and I hope you leave your number in case you have questions.
Apps, right on here. Now, I'll add how many copies I brought, lunch, and that wasn't true.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. On Zoom, anyone on Zoom?
If you don't have enough, we'll be cut.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else want to step up? Please state your name, your address. This is regarding this public hearing?
This is regarding the public hearing for the short-term rentals.
Yes.
I know, can you hear me? I had to come around here to, this is the way we speak. And now for something completely different. Good evening, everybody. I'm an Airbnb owner, and I have a slightly different take on the proposed legislation.
Your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Stroll. I live at 407 Ingrassia Road. I am a farmer, and I was a baker, but now I'm just a farmer. I'm the original Ingrassia farm. Nice to meet you all.
Have a pleasure. You go.
I don't think that the short-term rental business is quite the Wild West that it's perceived to be by some people. I don't think it's quite the Wild West. I know there's a variety of situations. I know there are bad neighbors in all shapes and forms, including long-term tenants and property owners. I've been around the block a few times. But most Airbnb owners that I know are very heavily invested in protecting their investment. They don't want their houses trashed. There's very strict rules about parties. And if there is a host on a platform that is hosting parties and destroying the neighborhood, and they get a complaint, they will take them off the platform. I can't speak for the other platforms. I do understand you want to have a permit system. I think some of these permissions things on this law are a little bit over the top. You know, I mean, having, having a map, you know, talking about a house with three or four bedrooms. If your smoke detector's going off, is anybody going to really stop and look at that map and see where the front door is? Or they're just going to run down the stairs and out the door? I mean, I think there could be a differentiation between owners who are on the property or adjacent to the property, have one or two units, than owners that are management companies, running multiple units, and are less personally involved. Those people may be some of the sources of the irritation. I haven't gotten any complaints from my neighbors, which I'm very pleased about. And I certainly don't want them disturbing me because I'm the neighbor. Most of the time, I can't tell they're there. So I think maybe there could be some relay in this law for small versus big and some things about the size of the house. I don't know who you intend to have inspect those fire extinguishers between every guest. That could be quite an industry in the town of Walke, but that has to be done by an outside party. That could put us all out of business, the expense of that alone. When the Airbnb owners, the property owners, we pay taxes. We keep our properties clean. We keep them in pristine condition or we couldn't say in business. And there are children that stay there. They don't go to school. They're not a burden on the school system, and I don't think they're a burden on the environment. The nature of business in this area seems to be seasonal. We get most of our guests in the summertime coming for the town and county events and weddings. Weddings is a big thing. And Lego land a little bit. But it's not, you know, you hardly booked it all in the winter, so you can't say that we're like putting stress on the environment year-round. It is unfortunate that there were thoughtless owners, and it's unfortunate that there are thoughtless people. But I don't think we need to punish the conscientious owners with onerous and heavy-duty requirements to appease for what's really a few bad apples. Would anybody like to ask me a question? Well, I really appreciate your attention.
How long have you been doing it?
We have been doing it about a year and a half. We, we want to keep the, we have bought two houses adjacent to our farm. One of the high-end birthplace of the very well-respected Joe Ingrassia, one of the original farmers there, also known as Uncle Pecky. And the other house was also built by one of the original farmers there. We wanted to restore them to the farm, but we're not millionaires. This isn't, by the way, Airbnb is not a get-rich-quick scheme either. They're splendidly expensive. And we do, we do give a lot of business, the local laundries, the local tradespeople, the plumbers, electricians, the carpenters, the painters. You know, just keeping the houses up the way they should be. And but if you don't keep those houses nice, you can't stay in business. That's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience?
Hi, Nomi Kelly, Ten Latty Row. Um, did you guys send out a public notice to our mailboxes regarding this public hearing? Are you required to?
No.
So how is the community of ours supposed to know? That this public hearing is happening and we're saying are very avid town followers and going to website?
Public hearing notice was posted and published as required by law.
Where is it published?
The record.
Time so record?
Yeah.
Uh, while I would just recommend that maybe it's published in addition to that somewhere else. I know you're required by law to only read the time so record. But.
It was also on the website.
That's what I'm saying. But so that as a person in the community, not everybody goes onto your website and most of the town. Really, I'd say two thirds of the town does not read the time so record anymore because it's not much of a newspaper. But but I understand you're required by law to do that. I'm I'm just saying that, you know, if you want community input, it's hard to get it if you're not. Like, you can put a sign out in front of a gallery that says, you know, you're going to have this public hearing.
We have posting places within the town where it's also posted. Unfortunately, for something like this, we can't send a notice to every. Property in the town because that would be cost prohibitive. Every time the town wanted to adopt a local law, it'd be thousands and thousands of dollars.
Well, it seems like they had to rethink this because a lot of people in the community do not know about this and I don't have a pro or a con about this. I really don't. But this seems like, wow.
I I appreciate what you're saying and. I don't, in the global sense, I don't disagree with you, ma'am, but the reality is that the public has. Access to the town's website and all of the public hearing notices are placed on it.
Not very transparent. I mean, you know, really, it's not. I just hope, I mean, I know you're you're doing what's required by law. And that's all you can do. I'm just saying, that's my thoughts about it and that's why I'm saying.
Good evening. My name is David Flipster. My wife and I live in uh, rural agriculture, always circle bill. And we'd like to thank the board for addressing the issue of short term rentals to the town of Walkill. Uh, for allowing us to share our views. Our perspective is probably a little more finely tuned than that of the average resident who may not have had the experience with short term rentals. Uh, since our immediate neighbors have been operating a short term rental in violation of the current town building laws with past two and a half years. And our residential experience is a very significant factor. We applaud some of the provisions in the introductory law, such as the requirements to ensure safety and provide for registration of the rental. However, the draft law is much more permissive than the existing zoning law. Specifically, it allows for short term rental dwellings that are not owner occupied. And it permits up to twelve overnight renters, in contrast to the four that are permitted currently. The draft law also does not address the use of the short term rental properties for parties and other events. Speaking first, the requirement for owners to reside in the rental property. In our view, houses used exclusively for short term rentals represent commercial businesses like any. Introduction of a commercial business into a residential or R A zone is not in keeping with the community nature of these neighborhoods. We purchased a home in this country setting to enjoy the peace and tranquility of a farming and residential community and we're under the impression. That the town code would protect us from being surrounded by commercial properties. Native legislations into the safety requirements for short term rentals should be independent of the right for residents of these zones to be free from adjacent commercial enterprises. Additionally, short term rental to unsupervised guests greatly increases the risk of disruptive behavior, trespassing on our property and other annoyances. It should not be the responsibility of the neighbors of these businesses police the behavior of unsupervised renters. The number of renters is another significant factor. The noise and disruption from larger groups of eight to twelve people is exponentially greater than for smaller groups. And this is irrespective of the capacity of the rental dwelling. A party atmosphere naturally develops when large groups congregate at a resort like property. And engage in activities that while may be appropriate for folks on vacation, are disruptive to the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. This is not the same thing as having a family of neighbors using their property next door. Neighbors may also occasionally congregate outdoors, have oysters, parties or activities like tennis, basketball, swimming. But they're neighbors. You know them. You have a friendly relationship with them and develop mutual respect and assistance. While I may take some iced tea over to a sweaty group of neighbors playing tennis and chat for a while, a group of transient renters engaged in the same activity is simply a nuisance. Short term renters have no incentive to neighborly. These issues are only amplified if parties and events are allowed. The lack of restriction in the current law is major oversight. Parties can get out of control. They can create significant noise and have the potential to become dangerous. In two twenty twenty, Airbnb banned parties at rental houses. In twenty twenty one, sixty six hundred people were suspended for violating this ban. Nonetheless, a quick internet search revealed that since April last year, there have been seven shootings to Airbnb parties with more than twenty six individuals shot, some fatally. And in case you think these events cannot happen in our communities, in twenty twenty two, the town of Clarksville, which is here in New York. Bans short term rentals after shooting at short term rental in New City. I know that these are anecdotal, but we don't want to become an anecdote. Why do we need to introduce these risks and annoyances into our communities? The proposed law would benefit a remarkably small constituency. I can find about thirty Airbnb listings in the town of Walkill currently. While having a negative impact on the thirty thousand top residents who do not operate short term rentals. In addition to the erosion of the enjoyment of residential property due to encroachment of new commercial uses. The property values for those living next to short term rentals will suffer. Who would choose to move into such a situation? So while we applaud the effort to specifically consider the regulation of short term rentals. We urge the board to reconsider the current draft law. We ask at a minimum, retain the current zoning law and acquiring owner occupancy at the time of the rental. With a cap of four renters at a time and a prohibition on parties, weddings and other events involving addition and.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Go ahead.
Okay, so we've been living next to a whole house, five bedroom, up to twelve renter, short term rent rental that's not owner occupied. Operating illegally under the current zoning laws since fall of twenty twenty. Additional businesses have participated there, including yoga instructors. So ten to twelve people, it's a really, really large and loud group, even. Even if you haven't experienced this, you know, when you go into a restaurant, you don't want to sit next to the party of eight or ten or twelve, want to sit. From that. How about trying to do that every night for going out to dinner? So the owner has also added daytime and evening events with additional guests not staying over, including at times around thirty cars in their parking area. We've had significant disruption. They have a pool and a tennis court. The tennis court is very close to our house. And it's essentially like living in a loud party resort with very close to our outdoor living spaces. The owner's not on site and I'm not even home at times. And these these renters disrupt our residential life. They have shown up on our porch. They have taken their roller suitcases up to our porch despite signs. They trespass on our property without regard, including on Christmas Eve. We've had a lot of loud music that can start anytime after seven A M until ten P M. They allow dogs. There's been dogs barking and barking intermittently at all hours and running on our property. There've been unsupervised children on the tennis court swearing and fighting as early as seven A M. We've had food delivery people trying to give us food. We've had pool people trying to collect money from us when they weren't home. Um, we've had people in our driveway for promotional videos for yoga. Uh, and with the owner's not on site, it's upon to us to really try to deal with these things. There's been a bachelor red party that the police have documented at the town of Walk Hills request. A graduation party, a wedding shower. There's a large commercial event where vendors try to deliver the rental items to our house. And things like this. So I think you get the flavor. So in summary, we are longtime twenty five plus year. Residents of the town of Walk Hill in the rural agricultural zone. We restored a historic home. We did not anticipate living adjacent to what has now, you know, become a vacation. With owners are not on presence. With unsupervised guests, loud parties, vacation resort like atmosphere, safety concerns with strangers, trespassing concerns. Transient and intrusive guests with little regard for their neighbors, us. And disruptive holidays among the many disturbing issues that accompany such a business. We believe that such a business is at odds with the peaceful residential nature of our community, which we sow value and treasure. And in some residential neighborhoods, that should be just that for the permanent residents. I ask you to imagine that your closest neighbor moved out of their house and started hosting different groups of people, ten to twelve at a time every week. People who are on vacation and with party on the property. Would this not have an adverse impact on your quality of life?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
I believe Javier Morales would want to speak on this. He's on Zoom. Javier, do you want to speak?
Hi, guys. How's it going? So my name is J V Morales and I am from a company called Granicus. Um, what we do here at Granicus is we help track, monitor and. For short term rentals for town, cities and municipalities. Uh, we work with several. Um, municipalities, counties and cities in New York right now in regards to. You know, the tracking, monitoring aspect of short term rentals. We've come across like. Listening to the story that was just proposed. Um, about party houses, stuff like that, kind of nuisance Airbnbs and whatnot. Uh, we actually do have a hotline that's twenty four seven in regard to contacting the hosts themselves because we do find the information like that. And all that kind of stuff. But I'm just kind of here listening on what kind of stories you guys have brought to the table in regards to short term rentals because. I'm very curious on what some of the big issues are. I just got into this meeting. I'm sorry I'm late. But I'm more curious to see like more uh, people's opinions on short term rentals and see how. We at Granicus can help you guys out in regards to the nuisance, um, Airbnbs and such.
Yeah, I I don't think we've ever met Mr. Morales, but your company sounds very interesting. I would suggest and recommend that maybe you. Call the supervisor's office and set up um, a visit into our work session and we can see what you have to offer and and. See if we can use your services and help us along with this. Very interesting.
I provided a cord his contact information as well as all the information to reach out in terms of the supervisor reaching out and setting up a meeting. He contacted me and told him we had a public hearing tonight and that he should stop by and and let us know um. What part of, you know, creating a law like this in terms of short term rentals is identifying the short term rentals, you know? I mean, we are relying right now on people coming forward and getting permits and all that type of stuff. But the this company, which is working with the county, uh, is in negotiation, contracted with the county. Um, could help identify that for the town and help some of these nuisance complaints that people are complaining about and ensure that the short term rentals are being regulated. Once a law is in place and ensure it's permitted properly as well as ensuring that uh, it's being taxed appropriately. And ensuring that they're in the right area. So um, you know, that was the reason for them wanting to stop by.
Thank you. Sir?
Okay, hi, I'm Bradley Stroll for four oh seven in Gracia Road. I used to work with my wife before. We're farmers. The properties are all in the Ag District. What we're trying to provide for the people who come is a country like setting. Uh, the house prior to turning it into an Airbnb and fifteen people living in it with a swimming pool and all kinds of stuff going on all the time. Uh, that has ceased since it became an Airbnb. Uh, as far as the number of people in the house. Yes, there could be ten, there could be twelve. Most of the time, it's a generational thing. It's the grandparents and 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 their parents and the grandchildren. Uh, most of these people are not looking to drink beer and have a wild party. Uh, I also am curious, what is the difference? Because this proposed law has nothing to do with bed and breakfasts. How does a bed and breakfast differ from an Airbnb?
Bed and breakfast, yeah, you just, you're renting a room. It's kind of like renting a hotel room. And except you get breakfast in the morning. Um. These Airbnbs are homes, you know, you know, you rent the home and you, you know.
Well, I had in the past, when I had traveled in Maine and New Hampshire, rented a uh, a bed and breakfast where we rented the entire house.
And then who made you breakfast?
Uh, we made breakfast. They left us frozen waffles, frozen ice cream, etc., etc. So we made the breakfast, but they left it for us.
When I was over in Ireland, they saved a bed and breakfast. I thought it was great. Got up in the morning and I had, you know. Breakfast, they made you breakfast. I always, that's that was my interpretation of a bed and breakfast, you know, so and and you rented a room. Um, so that's the way I view it unless I'm wrong. I don't know, but that's a difference I see, you know? That's all.
Okay. Airbnb doesn't have to be considered an evil word.
No. No, and and you know, it's going to wait until everybody is done, but you know. We're truly having a public hearing because we truly want help from the public. Um, ten, fifteen years ago, these weren't what they are today, right? They weren't as prevalent. Uh, we have nothing in our code to address it. There are issues that pop up and we got to deal with it. So if we can have a public hearing, come up with a law. Make it beneficial for the owner of the properties, the residents that neighbor them, you know. A win-win for everybody. You can't just ignore it though. Um, you know, I I'll I'll tell you a story. I mean, I know it's another disaster story and they're far and few between. They are. But what could potentially take place, uh, one municipality local to us, I won't mention it. Somebody rented out an Airbnb for their daughter. She put on social media that she was going to have a party. Right? Once it goes on social media, I mean, my God, that goes all over the place. So you've got all these kids coming from out of town. And uh, you know, some, some, some things happened to some. Young people at that party. Now, I get that they're far and few between, but. If if we can address this and trying to and try to. Try to, uh, you know, minimize the opportunity of something like that. And that's a good thing. So, yeah.
Okay, when when you have somebody booked with you for Airbnb, you have the option to be to uh, decline their their booking.
Right.
And we ask the questions. What is your purpose of coming to Middletown? Why are you coming here? What what's, you know, what's your purpose? And if they give us an answer that, you know, is is vague or 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 snotty, sorry, not renting you the house. I mean, we scream the people very carefully. Forget the law. We don't want our house turned into garbage. So we want to be very careful who who is, you know, in the house. I mean, the the first time we rented, we had a lady, her name was Molly. This lady was the lady from hell. I thought she pulled the TV. She looked the TV. And terminated to a different room. This lady was the lady from hell. I thought she pulled the TV. She looked the TV and targeted it to a different room. I mean, I was like, I was shocked. I was like, do I really want to do this? But everybody else has been great, no problem. I mean, we have repeat customers and none of my neighbors have ever had a a negative comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment. Um, what we hearing tonight and and the purpose of this public hearing is obviously to get everyone's feedback and opinions. Um, we have this rose that just spoke that they own their, they own and they live there and they have controls and they're they're watchful eye. Then we have unfortunately, um, David Dwight in Circleville that they live next to the the exact opposite of what you're running. So hopefully between the two, we can find that workable medium. You know, there are all those people that that have it that live there in control. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that that David Dwight Cyber suggested was um ownership living the unit. They should be limited. They should be certain controls there. If those controls are not there and and the people that are not residents that own but just want to make the buck on it will will impact and continue impacting our our neighbors and residents. So we're trying to avoid that and we're trying to find what works best. I think that it's it's in the right direction. I look forward to um Ms. Norton's um notes and additions to what we have today. I think this is this is a great start and and we can certainly add to it where the neighbors are not going to be impacted. Um, there's no reason why someone has been living in their house for twenty-five years or 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 less. And there's a change in his neighborhood or or the house next door that their whole life gets turned upside down. Um. I think you folks are are the exception. Hopefully that moving forward, there'd be more people that that live there and own it and care for it. So that's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to add a few things. I mean, listen, you're quietly listening uh and understand that public hearing is just that. It's a hearing for the public to come and speak. There's no intention to vote on this tonight, close it moving forward. It's the very first step to gather information. So the one lady said that initially it was very transparent. Please tell your friends and anybody else to email that this will be open again next month. Always all that for written comments all the time. Um, you know, because again, we're trying to do the best thing for the residents of the town as well as, you know, people that have businesses. Um. There's gotta be a a way that everybody can coexist. And I think, you know, from what I'm hearing having a background zoning and stuff, if if there's something happening at house that's designed for residential living and it's not residential living and it's kind of out of our kahoot, right? It's against our zone. You can't have a house where you can host events in an RA zone or a residential zone. That's like a commercial entity. So if you're going to have something where you're gonna host parties and weddings and things like that, that really doesn't belong in a residential area. Um, if people want to rent the house to live in the house and they'll get away from wherever they are or they're in their way on their travels and they're stopping for a night or two. You know, obviously they're sleeping and eating just like everybody else lives in the neighborhood, right? That would be the goal, have something like that happen. So again, this is um a law that our attorney grabbed for us to draft. And you know, we have it out there for you guys to look at and make comments on. This is great that we're getting these comments because this is what we want. This is what a public hearing is for. It's to hear from the public and allow for back and forth and come up with something again that hopefully everybody is satisfied with. So please understand there's no and don't feel like we're doing something shady because that's not what we would ever do. We're here to hear from you, listen to you. Whether you're from the side of the renter, um, you know, the business owner or the neighbor, clearly we have to listen to everybody's concerns. You know, and that's what this is about. So again, anytime you have comments, you can send them in. You can email. You can call any of us. We're all councilmen from all the wards representing the supervisor, representing the whole town. You need to reach out to any one of us and please do so. And so we can come up with a draft that works and makes everybody happy. So I just want you to understand that. Thanks.
And one in the audience?
My name is Charles Thompson. Uh, I live at two thirty Hufcut Road. And I am a property owner of three forty-seven Hufcut Road, which is the property that sits behind the Cloisters. Uh, I'd just like to explain a little bit that the property was subdivided years ago. It was property that I was born and raised on sixty-eight years ago. So I've been here a little longer than everybody. So I guess I'll only start. Um, it's kind of a unique situation. The property that we own is an L-shaped block. So our property owner is in front of us. Uh, from the road, you can't see our house. Uh, it sits on five acres, five point one acres. Um, at the time, we started renovating it, we contacted the town and contacted the building inspector and inquired about a permit. Um, so we got a permit to do what we wanted to do with that house. And at that time, there was no law on the book for short-term rentals. Only for Airbnbs. So we now know the difference. Um, as far as deliveries to the property, yes, it could be, it was a problem. We did put up a sign for three forty-seven Hufcut Road, all approved by the town. The inspector's been out. Uh, he's approved all the permits that we've had. So we're good to go as far as the town is concerned, as far as the building codes and the code enforcer. One of the parties that we had at the house, which was in September, uh, was my wife's birthday party. And I don't really think there's anything wrong with having your wife's birthday party number seventy on your property. It it ceased at ten o'clock, just like our rules call for. Um, and I know that was me commented out, but I think you have a right to do what you what you want to do with your property. And if we don't do a short-term rental when we sell that property, it's open to be sold to somebody that could have eight children. That could have motorbikes, go-karts, four-wheelers and riding all over creation all hours of the day. There also is a second house on that property which is currently abandoned. Nobody's been living there for the last ten or so years. But if both of those houses were occupied by families, I still don't think my neighbors would be happy with the noise that we created for those two houses. So um, I do spend a lot of effort on the uh laws. And I appreciate your effort into that and with a port to every. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Very good.
Javier Morales.
Am I allowed to speak? Is this a good time?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Um, so just just wanted adding on to what the conversation has been going on since you guys are in the middle of drafting laws, voting on these uh laws and such. Um. We do offer consultation services through Gran- Granicus when it comes to best practices. We've been working in this industry for, I don't know, about ten plus years now. Our consultant's been working with short-term rentals for twenty-plus years now. Um, he's been in the industry for a very long time and has seen the worst and the best when it comes to laws. So if you guys are open to it, if your supervisor and the councilman are open to it, I would like to um get them in contact with uh our good friend Jeffrey Goodman. He, you guys can look him up online. He has been working in the short-term rental industry when it comes to constructing um laws, bylaws, all that kind of fun stuff in regards to having the hosts and the public um coexist peacefully. Um, because it seems like there's a little bit of tension on both sides in regards to making sure everybody is heard. Um, so I would just like to suggest that because he has been working in this industry for a very, very long time. He's seen the best and he's seen the worst and he has very good opinions about how to draft a good law that is good for both sides equally.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. If you can contact my office, um, you're ready to take my phone number.
Yes, I have a pen and paper right here. Just let me know.
Eight four five six nine two seven eight two.
Seven eight. Perfect. Uh, I will give you a call tomorrow. We can set up a time to talk about that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else in the audience? That being said, um, I make a motion to keep the meeting open.
Public hearing.
Public hearing opens next two weeks.
No, just keep it, just keep it open without a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to keep it open indefinitely. Second by Councilman Johnson.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Fire?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Superintendent Fire?
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thornton, do you have a card?
I think I have a contact info.
Okay. Good evening. So this is Women History Month and one of the reasons that I want to recognize the women is the contribution of women throughout the years have often gone unappreciated for that. And yeah, I've got a margin, which is Women History Month. The time for reflection, appreciation, celebration. What does it mean? It means celebrating women's accomplishment and their contributions they have made to the life of everyone for the better. Most women encourage. They encourage not only women, but also men in the community they live in. It has been observed annually, month of March in the US of nineteen eighty-seven. And it's a point at Town of Walk Hill to recognize the great contribution that we have of women in the town. Now, I know everyone says, oh, just a month. We try to do it all year round. Because if you look around, there are a lot of strong women here. Every man up here said behind them is a strong woman. I believe I have a strong woman at home allowing me to do this. So my wife is not here. Probably said I'm too busy doing this and I think have allowed me to do something I love. With that, we're gonna start with a couple of uh So the first one we're gonna recognize is a woman who has been working for the town for a good number of years. And anytime I go to her, first thing I I supervisor, what do you need? I I love that. What do you need? Willing to help them. She by herself ran the planning board for a couple of years until we gave her a clerk to help her. And with that, Louis Charles? Gabrielle Shaw. Everyone who's here tonight say also got a certificate from a family woman Gunther who also um is something um for Miss Ray. I really thought she was gonna bring someone else like little. Next, um, another Town of Walk Hill employee fortunately is going to retire soon. And she's been with the town over fifteen years. Has done a tremendous job. And again, when I walk over to the assessors office, I look. She's there with a smile, trying a coffee. Happy. Um. And she's worked very hard and that, okay, we're gonna miss you, but I don't think you're going too far. With that, Susan Ivey. If you notice, on the other side of Town Hall, we have what we call the Little Free Library. Where we have books. Um, this was here when I got here and we are looking to expand it to go the other side and build and so on. If anyone comes into Town Hall and wanna take a book. Um, Susan Doye, who's in charge and has done a tremendous job. And we're looking to increase that little library. Because there's nothing like having a nice book to read. So she got here today. Thank you. Next, we have President of the Town of Walk Hill, Susan. I had the opportunity to meet over the over the last um eighteen months and she had done a tremendous job with our seniors now that everything is open. Um, you go down there, you see them play bingo. And I told her I'm gonna go down there and play bingo. I'm afraid that they're gonna take all my money all these evenings. But um, uh, Rosemary Massa, thank you very much for everything. Next, we have a young lady who has been a tremendous help to Town of Walk Hill. And you know, over the years, I've always said that the Gallery of More has been a tremendous neighbor, tremendous partner to Town of Walk Hill and the community. And one of the main force behind that is the Gallery of More marketing department. Helped us on the two hundred and fifty anniversary event parade. Right now it's helping us plan our Juneteenth event in the mall. With that, Carla Leo.
All I want to say is thank you to the board, the staff of the Town of Walk Hill and the police as the town supervisors, the senior, the president, the president.
Just want to say a special thank you to Carla. She's done uh, she really helped during the pandemic with President Visiter Program and doing food collection at the gallery. And doing food collection at the gallery and um, the visiting support, that really made a lot of sense. So I really wanna thank.
Next, we have a young lady that I met a couple of months ago and things that they have done, her and her husband in regards to prostate cancer. And you know, again, this is the people who are women who are doing things in our community. The co-founder of CHAI Support Services. And with that, Carrie Abrams.
I just wanted to say about my mom, we do a lot of good things for people. And everyone wants to be a better mom ever.
Hey, I would like to say thank you to the entire board, um, to you, Mr. Sarado, for opening the doors of the community for us to come. Um, my husband and I, we started this organization because he went through prostate cancer at early age, no symptoms. And we decided to bring, you know, something to the community. Uh, men don't talk about prostate cancer and the situation. Uh, people think that this is an elderly age situation, I guess that. They have been found cases of men, uh, as young as thirty-eight years old going to prostate cancer. The numbers are going up. And we wanna say thank you so much to all of you for the support. We were here last year and we hope to come back and we hope to see all these faces if you haven't get, it's a blood sample. Okay, it's only a blood sample, tell your friends and hope we can work together again this year and with all of you and see each of you coming, because I know you came and you did. And thank you for that, because we have to bring more of these events to the community. If they, uh, you know, if the men came, you know, they go to work, they're busy, but you have to think about your health. You have to think about your family, because I want my husband around and yesterday we celebrated twenty-three years together. And this is what we want for the children. To every child to have a grandfather there, there for them. Every, every family to have their parent, their brother. And if you have any history of cancer in your family, I just really encourage you to tell your doctor and take a test, because with early screening, we can do something. But when it's, you know, too advanced, unfortunately, sometimes the case is, you know, too late. But thank you so much, if I go on or not, I don't know. But thank you so much for your gift.
A lot of passion, passion in what she does. About the little guy, let's give him a little hand. Okay. Next, um. Let's turn the radio in the morning, for a radio. And there is a voice on there that if you need it, it's the soak joy that comes out of um, this woman's voice when she's on the radio every morning. I've had the opportunity to go on the radio with her and it's been phenomenal, I love it. We're gonna go on the radio with her. And she also does a lot of volunteer, one of the main things she's done and teared up is the Earth Day King Up. So that we are having Earth Day King Up coming up next month. This weekend we're having a summit where we are bringing in uh, the community, the businesses uh, who are all stakeholders in our town. Um, Kate Brennan, but she's not here today, but except in her honor is Ashelle Taylor who is on the radio in the afternoon.
I have a note, I have something to read. All right, just gonna get the gap. No. And this is on behalf of Kate Brennan. She said, thank you so much for this recognition, it's a pleasure to work with all the wonderful organizations and make the Hudson Valley such a great place to live. She had fun every day at work and we do in radio. We know we do, we get to do serious work though. And more radio allows her to lend the strength of the radio station to so many important causes. And she's very grateful each and every morning that she can go. She loves it. Um, and she said that she bought a new pair of work gloves and she could pick up those and smash the things to provide her. Next month.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so thank you everybody, on behalf of Kate Brennan and everybody at Long Radio. Excellent, thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't see our next two recipients is Iris Cora who owns Perkavino Pizza, small business owner in the Towne Walkill, um, who has great food. And again, uh, they're willing to help the community, um, but she's not here today. Congratulations to her. Next, um, I don't believe they're here either, um, I'm gonna attempt to say her name. Swat, Swat Sally Doki. I think I already messed it up, she, um. Thank you for the appreciation, she is the owner of Indira's Kitchen. Um, right across from um, the Starbucks and he, again, another community patron, one of the top community. Um, she was able to help a doctor come on the celebration and she was able to provide food for us at the event of communities. That is who we are recognizing for um, history, Women History Month. And then we have something special today. Um, our neighbor, Tom Crawford. Um, a celebr- had a celebration. Towne Walkill of course had a celebration last year when we were in two hundred and fiftieth, April seventh is our birthday. Will be two hundred and fifty-one. So, um, they are celebrating the bicentennial. And we're gonna do a resolution recognizing that, and we also have a certificate. And um, accepting in their honor is county legislator, Ron Sess. Why can't you, this is kind of for the story, am I right on that? Okay.
At first before us, congratulations to all the ladies here in Towne Walkill, I know they played a very, very important role. I'm glad to see them represent. Thank you. And on behalf of supervisor Charles Corns and Crawford Town Board, I'm here tonight to uh, accept this proclamation or this certificate, recognizing our bicentennial. And yes, I'm also the acting town historian. I have been in contact with your historian, Oger, who's not worthy, who told me I had an hour of speaking time.
But another one can just stick around a little bit. Um, our historian has historic moments that he wants to share with the audience and he said, it all run out, so you can just stay here for a minute while he does this. Three minutes? Okay. Ten, three minutes, that was, you said three minutes. Like a cheat. We can have a five-minute meeting in a minute, twenty-five minutes.
Stop being so an hour. You ready? Oh, good. Hi, everybody here and I'm Zoom, I'd like to say everybody there. I'm Tom Nasr, the town historian. And also with us tonight are the assistant historians, June Vander Schaaf and former assistant, Juan Cesar. Uh, I have three items tonight, one very short. Uh, not one of them. Not one of them comes from this eighteen eighty-one history of Orange County, which ironically does not include Middletown, because when they wrote this in eighteen eighty-one, Middletown was only a village, not a city, and I'll give you a few more words on that in a minute. Uh, the first item that I like to just mention regarding the Middletown. At the time, Middletown was a village in the Towne of Walkill. Villages are not separate sovereign entities. They are part of the town, mostly through the budget process, but can also share things like police department and the highway department. Cities are sovereign, but cannot have villages, just for a little history information. Uh, for the next item, in eighteen eighty-eight, Middletown became a city. But before that, in eighteen eighty-nine, a trolley was planned for electric power. In eighteen eighty-three, construction started on the Middletown Goshen Taxi Company. Eighteen ninety-four, construction completed and Midway Park opened down by the Gulf. Uh, generally, trolley companies open uh, parks for people to go to so they can pay their bill for the fare. And they made a lot of money that way. At eighteen ninety-nine, the trolley was reorganized as the Middletown Goshen Railway Company. But when it first started up, I suppose, in the eighteen seventy, it was the Towne of Walkill, but it never went anywhere until they constructed it later. In nineteen oh five, it became the Walkill Transit Company. In nineteen twenty-four, with the advent of motor vehicles, it reduced revenue and the trolley closed forever. Now, just in regard to the of Middletown. Why is it Middletown and what happened to Walkill on your address? Everything you get in the mail is Middletown. Well, why all the mail in the Towne of Walkill is just the Middletown? They are completely two different municipalities now. Before eighteen eighty-eight, they were the same. That Middletown became a separate city. Also, it does not help that the boundaries are so confusing between Walkill and Middletown. Even Congressman Ben Gilman could not get to the post office to recognize the Towne of Walkill. Because the actual post office building is in Middletown. The mail goes to the Middletown building and then the post office redistributes it, because they know where all the roads are in the town and the city. Uh, the post office did add a zip code, Walkill, on the east side of Route seventeen. But the zip code, one oh nine four one, is managed by one oh nine four oh, no. And the next item I have, in regards to the St. Patrick's, they're going to be lunch for seniors. I tell you, guys did a great job putting, putting that off, we had a good, good turnout. And including leprechauns, you might even know a couple of leprechauns. But yeah, somebody, somebody knows. Now, speaking of leprechauns. Did you know that leprechauns are so old, they remember when rainbows were black and white?
Thank you, Tom. Very good. Thank you. We have other participation, three minutes on agenda item. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Bye. Anyone in the audience? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence? Thank you. With that, we'll start with the resolutions.
Resolution, the town board of Towne of Walkill authorizes the project to accept the post in the relocation of the inward and tower drive B storage, water storage tanks. Result of the town. Result of the recommendation of Pittrow, consulting of the near, the town board hereby authorizes and directs the town board supervisor to to so proposal for the rehabilitation of inward and tower drive B water storage tanks from Tan Enterprises in the amount of one million nine hundred sixty-eight thousand two dollars. Result of the town supervisor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents through inventory, acceptance of sent in, subject to the approval of the town. These improvements will be funded through the project budget on HT one eight three one zero point four six one six.
So move, second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution, the town board of Towne of Walkill recognizing the Towne of Crawford by the ten minute, matter of motion.
So move. Second.
Seconded by the entire board. Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Supervisor Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution, the town board of Towne of Orange authorizing this miniature grant application to the Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program for the year twenty twenty-four. Resolve that improve the town supervisor's destiny is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all contract documents, including, but not, not limited to, an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Orange for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program, matter of motion.
So move, second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Resolution, the town board of Towne of Walkill authorizing the town supervisor executing outside vendor contracts for information technology services. Resolve the town board of Towne of Walkill hereby leaving this is the town supervisor and says it being to execute contract with Edmunds to purchase renewal access license for the town hall email server, town hall file server and the police department terminal server for a total of some of five thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. In accordance with the proposal annexed here to along with any other appropriate documents, who put the root committee consent of this resolution or which are subject to review and approval by the town attorney, matter of motion.
So move.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Chris Johnson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Mr. Ryan?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll start with the councilman, uh, in my right, Councilman Miles.
Each week, the town approves what it called warrants of the town. Warrants are bills the town pays to its vendors. This process starts way before the board of the Senate. It starts with procurement policy, ensuring that the bills are audited by the town controller and that the correct amounts are being charged to the correct accounts. All board members have a fiduciary responsibility to affect taxpayer money and assets. As late as the end of last summer, when I reviewed the warrant. As late as the end of last summer, when I reviewed the warrants against bills, it was clear expenses weren't charged in correct accounts. The warrant wasn't always audited prior to board approval, and money used to pay bills didn't always come out of the correct accounts, to name a few of the right factors. There were any number of errors, gaps, and defaults, including that no one was signing off and approving consultant agreements, being our shut town, an important step to ensure that the town is receiving full value for the services being rendered. We received multiple warnings from various accounting firms and state comptroller's office. The new comptroller has done an excellent job in restructuring the department and moving the department in the right direction. She has created procedures for purchasing as well as reviewing and approving those purchases, including segregation of duties and review to minimize mistakes and errors. These procedures were only provided to the board three weeks ago from review. However, with the turnover in the department, which now includes this comptroller, this is important to have policies and procedures and proper oversight to ensure the progress we've made to date isn't lost when she leaves and someone new comes in. The warrant review policy is a temporary control put in place until the board could establish a proper internal control in accordance with the counterdate report recommendation, recommendations I proposed to adopt in November twenty twenty-one. This would include a warrant, what a policy, fixed asset inventory policy, cash deposit management policies, custody of asset policy, capital project policies, payroll policies, and other policies needed by the town. To date, the only accounting policy presented to me by the supervisor was an outdated procurement policy last updated in two thousand and four, an investment policy which the town started following, and recently the board has a fund balance policy. In May of twenty twenty-two, in January of twenty twenty-three, the board authorized the supervisor to engage an outside accounting firm to create these policies throughout the town. Each time the supervisor indicated he was discussing an engagement letter. To date, this has not been done, and there have been no discussions from the supervisor about it. In February, based on the comptroller's preliminary findings, the town instructed the supervisor again to engage an outside firm to examine the town's payroll in more detail. When I followed up with the supervisor last week, I was informed this has not been done yet. Policies and laws are only good if they're being followed. My extension's not because I don't want to pay the bills, but because we need to establish proper policies and procedures and adhere to them. Otherwise, why should the public have any confidence in a board that refuses to follow the rules? Mrs. Brando indicated he attended the same comptroller classes that I did in the city, and in each class, they discussed the importance of policy and internal controls. There was even a specific class devoted to internal control of procurement, where they spoke about warrant audit policy and an entire class about board reporting. I even brought back the books from the state comptroller's office, which I provided for the board and the public for review. So why is the supervisor acting like he doesn't know about any of this or that it's not necessary? We have had years to implement best practices, and there are two accounting policies, and both aren't being adhered to in its entirety. Even the comptroller's office, still at town hall after ten months, the supervisor and board are content with waiting until the report is issued rather than making this a priority. After all, it's only taxpayer money, right? A proper tone needs to be set from the top. It is the responsibility of the board to set policies and establish a good working control environment and to ask questions. Details matter. Everything else is just an excuse, and excuses accomplish nothing. It's time to stop making excuses and just get the job done. In addition, I want to publicly thank the Cretia Anderson for all the hard work and wish her the best in her next endeavor. I want to congratulate everybody who got awards tonight. It's a great honor, and we love to honor the the people who do great works in this town. The corned beef and cabbage lunch was an amazing event. Gary did a great job again. Thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Um, yeah, let's give, let's give Gary a hand. Thank you, Gary. Great job. And uh, and thank you very much.
Thanks. So hang on a second. So Neil, did you vote on the warrants when Frank was the supervisor? And if so, why? Why did you stop voting on them when George became supervisor? Why did you?
Okay.
I got a question. Hang on, I got, why did you tell Councilman Johnson as soon as the election was over, out in the parking lot in the police station when they were handing out the uh, the COVID testing kits, that you were going to spend two years? Your sole purpose was to spend two years trying to take all of us there? Neil, you've been nothing but partisan, nothing. And we've all sat up here like a gentleman while you rip into us month after month. Nobody wants to hear it, man.
Can I, can I respond? No, no, I was having questions. You said for me to respond, so I'm going to respond to the question. I'm going to answer the question, so let me respond, please. First of all, I never said that, so I'm not sure where that's coming from. You want to party to the conversation, Mr. Coy, so I would respectfully say shouldn't be repeating something that you were not a party to. And second of all, second of all, right, the warrant policy, right, had been passed in September. Okay, we hadn't even started it until December. December, there was one vote in December about approving the warrants. That was it. That was the only approval of the warrants was in December that Frank was in, and I had reviewed the warrants at that point in time, and they looked fine. However, after that, we found out that there were errors coming through on the warrants, that they were not audited, that sign-offs were not being done properly, things were not being coded to the right accounts. So at that point in time, I decided that it needed to stop, that we needed to make changes to ensure that the proper controls were in place so that we all were getting the right information and that the right information was being put into the system. Proper controls are clear, and the comptroller's office guidance is clear. So I'm not sure why there's such stubbornness in actually just implementing them. If you just implement them, then you won't have to worry about me talking about it anymore. That's it. We, we, we went through this. Three times around, three times. And then, one way, the next one was one. We want to ask the supervisor to hire somebody. In January twenty-one, we authorized the supervisor to hire somebody to understand why it's not being done. If we're just authorizing something, then that means that everybody should do it. We all understand, we are the gentlemen, and you can't be a gentleman without speaking. Same point as that. That you're going to win the basket every year. And we're going to see what else. Easy answer. There's trust internal. Okay, you need the bodies to have the procedures work. Okay, that's next. You will say thanks for.
So, wait, 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 wait. So, Councilman Meyer, you're making this, this thing here.
Of course.
So, next question. Did I have to do it to the last year to help me with the policies? Yes or no? Yes or no? Yes or no? Don't need to hold out. Answer the question, yes or no?
Want to thank you, supervisor, for endorsing me for supervisor, because this is the job of supervisor.
Okay.
And that's what I'm going to say is thank you for endorsing.
Thank you.
You endorse, I very appreciate the endorsement. It's your turn to do. I told you when you have to do it, so do it.
I've been doing it. I've been doing it. Then Ian said, okay, but I didn't ask for your, the CPI, anybody here around? Sounds good, sorry. So I met with your assistant, which I had told my board of citizens, and how? And what did you say?
No. Actually, I don't believe. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I want to, I want to correct you on that. Did I not sit with Dan with you in February seventh of two thousand twenty-two and discuss this with you? No, hold on, hold on. You brought this up.
So I think you discussed it.
And yeah. And I know that meeting, you did not ask me for my help at that meeting. At that meeting, you specifically said, I will take care of it, and then you did nothing. So at this point in time, why would I help anybody who refuses to do their job? You did.
What else?
You.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
All right, so I'm not going to play politics and take care of town business. For the month of February, the building department was pretty busy. They did forty-three permits, eight two certificate, two hundred and six thousand thirty-seven dollars uh, with the total fees collected. Complaints they addressed to thirty-three and carry out seven hundred and seventy-seven inspection. Water and sewer also pretty busy as always. Uh, as you know, our infrastructure is dated. These guys are busy taking care of water leaks breaks that happen on a regular basis. So we had three main breaks. Uh, all were repaired in a timely manner with very little interruption in service. Two leaks um, in the roadway that actually had to be repaired because they were causing placing and evening hours, which would drop a little freezing. And as always, the town would like to thank the residents, um, you know, we appreciate your we appreciate your cooperation uh, while we're doing repairs. Without water. Yeah, tower drive and inward water tanks, bids are in, opened, um, and hopefully the project will be underway this spring. That's something we definitely want to take care of. That helps with the total trihalomethane issues that we have by getting the organics out of the tanks. As you've heard us discuss before with the two other tanks that we've already rehabilitated. Crews in the water and sewer department are working with the highway department in the next several weeks to replace fire hydrants. Um, the plan is to get as many done as possible this year, uh, because you know, as a hydrant that's not working, it could be the difference between, you know, serious property damage or worse, should there be a fire. The reminder that the spring fire hydrant flushing, it's the weeks of April tenth to the twenty-third. Uh, the town will be doing ours within the first week or so, but you'll have private contractors, uh, fire departments flushing other hydrants throughout those two week periods. So if you get discolored waters, it should clear up quickly. Um, so not to worry there. And again, that's something that takes care of the organics in the water system, which helps with the trihalomethane issue that we've been trying to uh, tackle. So by flushing the organics out of the water lines, um, that's one of the uh, perks we give to try and make that as limited as possible. So there's some good news. The latest water sampling results for the trihalomethane, tell you, acidic acids came back within EPA guidelines for drinking water and below the actual level of eight micrograms per liter of water. However, there's still some bad news. Just because that was one round, the other rounds, which we had some areas that were slightly elevated, they'll still get that letter that goes out that, um, you know, says they were above the standards, but our latest round was actually pretty good. And again, we're still working with our engineers on a daily basis to try and address that issue. The sewer department clarifier project is underway. Both clarifier tanks, one and two, have been empty drained and measured up, so the equipment can be ordered to restore those. And it was done in, um, like in a way that we took one out of service, measured it, put it back in, and took two out, so there was no disruption on any of the sewer stuff, and nobody even from the town noticed that was occurring. So that was a great job by the department and the contractor. The Western Avenue Pump Station Project is underway. The contractors started to install piping, and that project will continue to move forward as materials become available, because there still is a backlog in materials, believe it or not. The water sewer department continues to work with contractors throughout the town on a daily basis, and as always, those departments have to run, um, you know, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. So a great job by those guys and gals to take care of that. Um, comments? I would just like to congratulate all the award recipients tonight, and I think that's pretty awesome that this town takes the time to recognize people in our community that make a difference. I think it's important to let them know that we appreciate all that they do. I don't want to get into the mess that was going on earlier, um, but I'm not going to go there tonight. Spring break is right around the corner. You guys that are taking vacations or your family, or at least have your kids home from school, please take the time to enjoy them, do some fun stuff with them, and I don't know how much you appreciate them um, how important they are in your life, because remember, our children are our future. Um, so do everything you can to make them better people, and hopefully our community will get better and better every time we have a generation coming up. Easter is right around the corner, so just want to wish everybody a happy Easter. Please, again, enjoy your family time, quality time. That's the most important thing. Obviously, we like to have dinner, and that's important and everything else, certainly, but again, you know, be with your friends and family, because there's nothing more important than that. You can have everything in the world, but without friends and family, you really don't have anything. So just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coy.
Okay, let's start with highway. Uh, for the month of March, we have been widening the unpaved portion of Abrahamsen Road and Highland Lakes Road, and we're working on replacing drainage and prepping, uh, prepping Brody Road for pavement later in the year. We've been doing a lot of basin repairs throughout the town, as well as taking down a lot of dead trees and patching potholes. We'll be opening our brush, leaf, and grass clipping drop-off at the Highway Garage on April eighth. And the hours will be from eight AM to twelve noon. Uh, you must enter our facility off of Kiesel Road. This will be open every Saturday from April eighth until December. Uh, Veterans Affair, so Sal Lucido was here and had to take off. Um, but he left this with me. The town Walkeville Youth Coalition put out a collection jar, and they had their Valentine with a veteran spaghetti dinner. They collected four hundred dollars to help with repairs done to the wall and to help pay off the next section. The spaghetti dinner was a great success because of all the organizations involved, the true collaboration of service organizations, all the veterans organizations, town of Walkeville Police, uh, Youth Coalition, town of Walkeville Police Community Council, Walkeville East Rotary, business and professional women's groups, and he left this here with me, so. And we got some, uh, committee members here. We got Mike Cody and Rosie and Larry Walsh, and I'll give it to you afterwards, all right, guys? So, um, moving on, ball pickup. It's back, it's here, April sixteenth, first ward. Every year, we, every other year, we swap them. So last year, uh, fourth ward was first, and we ran four, three, two, one. This year, we'll go one, two, three, four. So if you live in the first ward, April sixteenth, and uh, I'm sure everybody's going to want to speak. Well, actually, we're almost done. So second, second ward is April twenty-third, third ward is April thirtieth, and fourth ward is, uh, May seventh. Have your garbage out the Sunday night prior to that, that date, so that you don't know when they're coming. They could come Monday, they could come Friday. Who knows? But once they come, they're probably not going to come back, so you don't want to miss it. And uh, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to leave it there. Nah, I'm, I'm, I think I'm done. Yeah, so.
Councilman Valanson?
Mr. Supervisor, uh, I'll start with parks. Um, this is from our park superintendent. We finished all the fence repairs at Howard Drive, the Little League Complex, and they've been and in Polknoy, when there's a snowstorm, our parks department also joins GW to clear the snows, so they've been involved with removal of the snow, whatever snow we've gotten. Um, excuse me. They started spring cleanup in all the parks and facilities, and they received a shade canopy for the new dog park at Circleville Park, and they dug the footings and should have a canopy up this week, and then they can finish adding the surfacing benches and accessories in the next two weeks. So it should be the park, the dog park at Circleville Park should be ready by, um, the spring, by Easter. We prepared and served corned beef dinner for seventy seniors at the community center and handed out approximately seventy takeout dinners. They'd like, we'd like to acknowledge retired town employee Gary Lake, papa, papa, papa. And Joe Grucer, who came on both days to cook and prepare corned beef and sides. They've both been helping with this event for over twenty years. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Bill. Our next event will be our Easter egg hunt, which is at Circleville Park on April eighth at ten AM. Um, so some of the, the things that have been scheduled in the town, you know, I gotta say, we can disagree on all levels, and, but we have to respect each other. And, and it should be discussion and, and differences in opinion in a respectful manner, without making accusations, without throwing stones and everything else. It's just, you know, unfortunate those individuals that choose not to do that. Um, hold the town back, and, and not only physically, but in, in morale and everything else. So, um, thank you, supervisor and his staff, for always moving forward in a positive way and, and making, creating events, acknowledging people that, you know, Coming out of the COVID and and the whole pandemic, we need things like that. We need to have a positive face and. And and keep our faith that that people are still good and we can do good things. Um that being said, the two twenty twenty three upcoming free events in the town, we just had the St. Patrick's. Day luncheon, April eighth will be the Easter egg hunt at ten AM at Circleville Park. On April twenty second, um. The Earth Day cleanup, that will be from nine to twelve, and everyone is meeting here at Town Hall for that. May twentieth is Touch a Truck at Circleville Park, and that's from ten AM to one PM. That's a big hit with the little kids. They love it. Um June, June nineteenth is Juneteenth Jubilee. That's three to five at the Gallery of War. On June twenty fourth. Fishing Derby and all these events will be on on. Both down the website. If you can, if you wanna reference them and and have any questions, just call the the office. Um twenty, June twenty fourth Fishing Derby at eight thirty at Circleville Park. And July second will be our Independence Day fireworks display, and that will be from six to nine. And we're bringing it back to the Town of Walk Hill Golf Course, which is um. I hear a lot of people are happy about that. Um moving ahead. We are police. Our current staffing is at forty nine full-time sworn police officers. Uh arrest data to date. I guess we're up two point eight nine percent, a hundred and forty-three arrests for twenty twenty-three versus one thirty-eight for twenty twenty-two. Uh the next police community council meeting will be seven PM on April sixth. Uh Police Youth Coalition, last night they hosted a movie night during which we watched Matilda, the musical. That's pretty cool. It was amazing that they had this big screen and the kids were all in pajamas and had blankets on the floor. And our Rosie was in pajamas. So uh it it was, it was, you know what? The kids loved it. It was the life for them. They had a big screen that one of the officers um let us borrow. Uh and Rosie, you do a great job. Those kids, they really appreciate you and so do their parents and so do we. So it was a great time and it was well attended. Um thank you for for Rosie putting this event together. And Sergeant Pat Marcio and Joe Andre for setting up the screen projector and sound system. Um future events include Hudson Valley Renegade Games, our annual police versus youth memorial softball tournament. The next meeting will be at seven PM on Tuesday, April eighteen, at the community center. On March twentieth, the county informed us. That we will be receiving a grant in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to fund our coalition. Um and the supervisor received that and we were ecstatic about that. Hey. On a darker note, arrest on March fifteenth, the Town of Walk Hill detective John Sonnenfeld arrested. Um an individual charging her criminally negligent homicide. The arrest was the result of investigation into the April seventh accident that caused the death of Jean Carlos Catus. Our police department was assisted by the New York State Police and Dutch County District Attorney's Office. Our junior police academy based, based on the great success of last year's junior police academy, this year's program will expand. Through a four one week session. The academy will be daily from nine to three. The academy will include activities such as drill lessons. Physical fitness, character, safety lessons, guest lectures, crime scene investigation, court procedures and tour. Team building exercises, CPR and first aid training and much more. The sessions for the junior police academy will run from the first session will be June twenty sixth to the thirtieth. And that will be for third to fifth graders. Second session is July seventeenth to the twenty first, and that will be for third to fifth graders. Session three will be July twenty fourth to the twenty eighth, and that's for the hour six and eight graders. And the last session will be um August fourteen to the eighteenth, and that again will be in sixth to eighth graders. The academy will include, it will conclude with a graduation ceremony at the end of each week. With pizza, cupcakes, pork, that's official announcement letters and their application can be picked up from the Town of Walker Police Department. Maple Hill Elementary School, Mont Hagen Middle School, living A Carter Elementary School, Circleville Middle School. Circleville Elementary School and Anderson Elementary School. Applications will be available starting April eleventh and must be completed and returned. To the above location, no, no later than May eighth. To any of the above locations, sorry. If you have any questions, please con- please contact Stephanie Roberto at Roberto dot. Stephanie dot Roberto at A E C S D M dot org. And Chief, I'll let you speak on the um. We just had a. A discussion on on mobile mental health partnerships, and so I'll let the chief touch on that. Um. I just touched on this because it's it's been going on and on and on and and um. You know, when I, when I first ran for office and there was oh, there was controversy and it was tough decisions to be made. Um I said to myself, you know, my kids are watching this every once in a while. They will reference it. So. I wanted to leave them one day. If, once they grow up and they have to make those tough decisions that they reflect on dad, on me. And they say, you know, dad made a tough decision. It wasn't a popular one because, you know, people were not gonna like him or dislike him, but it was the right one. And it was the right thing to do. So, you know. I'm gonna say something, people are not gonna like it. People in my own party may not like it, but it's the right thing to do. Back in September eighth, twenty twenty-one. Then Supervisor Lindato made a motion for a resolution to implement procedures. It was seconded by Councilman Meyer. The resolution read as such. Resolution, resolution in Town of Walk Hill approving accounting and payroll reporting procedures. Whereas the Town of Walk Hill has determined that it is necessary to set forth certain operating policies and procedures. With respect to the Town Accounting and Payroll Departments. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Town of War, Town Board and Town of War, Walk Hill. That the following policies and procedures shall become effective of. Accounting Department, the Town Controller, auditors or warrants prior to each check run. Signatures on each warrant summary report by the controller if required to confirm each warrant has been reviewed and approved. On a biweekly basis, the Town Controller will submit to the Town Board current report, warrant or voucher to be paid. Town Board members will sign off that they have received and reviewed the warrant, and upon approved by majority, all vouchers. Contained and set warrant will be paid. Other than those with more documentation, if more documentation is needed. In the event of an emergency requiring a town controller to process a voucher outside the existing warrant approval procedure, the following must occur. Town Controller must obtain prior approval from their supervisor or designate. The town supervisor or his designate will be required to review or supporting documentation prior to the invoice voucher. Being processed and signed off, allowing the controller to directly process the invoice voucher. A due signature will be required on the check prior to the check being released with payment. Number four, on all payments greater than twenty-five thousand, a due signature will be required on the check or authorized payment. Number five, the Town Controller will provide to the supervisor and Town Board on a biweekly basis. A budget versus actual report for department and fund. On a calling basis, the controller will submit to Town Board a trial balance and cash flow analysis. Payroll Department, the payroll manager will be required to submit a monthly basis. On a monthly basis to the Town Supervisor, monthly payroll, massive change report. The Town Supervisor will review the monthly change report and sign off that the report has been reviewed and approved. Prior to the generation of first payroll each year, the payroll manager shall submit to the Town Board a payroll change report reflecting. Any payroll or position changes that set forth in the department. Adopt the annual budget reach that's tracked if anybody is voted. And we hire somebody to track and make sure that the salary line, it was, it was um voted in the budget. This was approved by the entire board, voted and approved by entire board, as set forth following policies and procedures. And we've been. Getting a list of warrants since then and voting on it. And everybody until. The previous supervisor left, voted on several warrants, everybody. Not just in December, I have my notes, everybody. I checked with our auditors. And and I asked him, was there anything missing from this procedure? Anything missing from this warrant process that would keep us from voting on it? And he said, no, this is exactly what the town needed and and it should continue. Now, this is a process that the town uses to pay its bills. People do services to the town, they s- they. We buy things from local vendors and they submit bills. They have to get paid so they can keep going and their. And their businesses can keep functioning. And if the town doesn't pay them, well, we stand bad with them. The town doesn't pay them. We hold them up and we hold ourselves up. So this is the process and and it's followed and we vote on it. Our number one priority. When we get elected. Along with the other priorities is to audit claims and pay bills. And that's what we do when we look at the warrants. That's what we do when we sign off on them. So please, let's, let's try and. Be civil to each other. You know, it's a political year. Why does it have to be other? Make your point. Let us know what you're writing on. Let us know what you think you're going to change or improve in it. But it doesn't have to be other.
Thank you. All right, this is my turn. I'm not gonna make this political decision, the forum for it. But I'm gonna make a couple of statements. First of all, today, congratulations to all the women we honored today. Congratulations to Tana Crawford on the advice and testimony. Um last Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to the American Youth Policy Level Eighteen One, who had a great breakfast, great turnout. Um and of course to Gary Lake, thank you very much, Jay, the Parks Department. Um who cooked the Friday before the, I'll say Patty's Day. Um successful, it's great turnout. One thing is that. We just rolled out a new emergency alert system. Um they're gonna see these around. Around the town. You got a phone? Sign up, please do. Um one of the great things about this system is that. If you are in an area and you have a cell phone, even though you're not signed up. And say there's a water main break and and the road is closed and you have to be in that area. You will get a notification. Not collect your information, you just get the notification. Um it is a, a lot of talk was put into the system and given information to our residents. So um please do sign up. It also makes phone call. If you don't have a, a phone there and it's on internet, um. Doesn't get a text message and it will also call you. So it's something good that we rolled out. We have. This come, this coming Saturday, the town will have is our Earth Day Summit. Like I said in the past. We're engaging our business and community leaders in the community. Um there's gonna be our first summit where we're gonna hopefully get everyone who are stakeholders in this town. To help us clean up the town, not just, you know, on Earth Day where we pick a row. So I'm hoping that um we have a good turnout, which I I've been getting feedback and a lot of residents and businesses will be attending. Um next. Saturday, if anyone's interesting, I will be holding a coffee with the supervisor. Uh nine to eleven, ready in this room, kind of speaking to me. All right, so. A lot been said tonight. And I just wanna make a quick statement. A brief comment with regard to a news article appearing earlier to speak containing claims. That the FBI was conducting an investigation into Town of Walk Hill Finance. It is simply not true. It's simply not true. We have contacted FBI and they have confirmed that no investigations of any kinds taking place. As a retired police detective. I can confirm that federal criminal allegation are the only ones that are investigated by the FBI. I've been in office fifteen months. No FBI agent has contacted me or my office. I lived in that world. Law enforcement. Furthermore, no local or state law enforcement agency has contacted me or my office. Related to any alleged past or present. Alleged criminal activity within our town government. Not having accounting policy or procedure, which is what is alleged in the article. Is not a crime, a federal crime. And not even a crime. Furthermore, the allegation is not true. My Councilman Meyer has stated earlier. I did get policy and procedures out. Three weeks ago. I did an office fifteen months, keep that Councilman seven years. These two policy and procedures are in place. And we are actually in the process of updating some of them. So therefore. It is important for this town board to work together. Unfortunately, that has not happened. But the majority of the board is working together. I've done nothing but help this community move forward, move this town forward, coming out of COVID. Coming out of what happened in this town two years before I took office. We have to move forward, working together. And we have to be tolerant. They wanna be negative, that's undone. We're gonna keep the role, we're gonna keep the high role, and we're gonna be. Because what's, what we've been doing here since I took office. Is what's important, recognizing our community, our community leaders, people who are important. But let us to do our job. Fifteen months I've been in office. And I know my team and myself. And the majority of this board have. What's best and have the best interest of this town. With that. I would like to. Give it over to Tom Clark.
Always has happy news. Um if you wanna visit our dog park, it's open. Sunday is your chance to come to the community center from eleven to one. Orange County Health Department is offering a free rabies clinic. And I believe, I know middle town requires that at their dog park, that dogs are vaccinated um. Before they go there. So that's Sunday, eleven to one at the community center. And if you're around on Sunday and you want anything better to do, and you wanna be in charge of paper towels and windbags um to do the unmentionable. Stump in because we can always use help. Um fishing licenses are for sale, Mr. Lake. Trap season, April first. Um we always have the DEC licenses available. The pavilions, um I have to say, I believe the month of July is booked. So if you're planning on having a party. Um you should give us a call because that's um filling up quickly. There's some new legislation that takes effect, I believe, on the twenty-eighth of this month. Um that would allow for individuals to obtain a one-day license to perform a marriage ceremony. Um. It's kind of uh convoluted a little bit what the rules are, um but we'll have all that information. We've had a couple of calls from folks. Um who would like to do that.
They could marry people for one day?
You can get a license for one day, yes, to marry folks. Um thank you to Chad from, uh he's the Hannover, the Hannover manager down the hill. Um I think it's the last two winter years, he split the cost with me on the cupcakes for the seniors. Um and Chad is a great guy. Um in the middle of COVID, um he put a trailer out in his parking lot and filled it with canned goods. Um and pet food and and all kinds of things. Um so I don't like to like pull up stores, but. That he is a, a genuine man and um always willing to, to help when, when we ask him. Um tomorrow night, I'm gonna go to the Girl Scouts. We have two troops here um in Town of Walk Hill and I think. Sherry stole me the other day. She's upwards of ninety girls now. They have what's gonna be called their gallery night where they're going to be um showing their artwork. In all different mediums. And we have um those beautiful hangers here in the hall. Um as you supervisor, and maybe we can look at some of their work and bring it here so that folks could come in um and see that. And I'll end with, um there are many women elected in Orange County. In the country, actually. And on Tuesday, in the Village of Goshen, a lovely young lady by the name of Molly O'Donnell. Was elected mayor of Village of Goshen and she. was elected mayor of Village of Goshen and she's the first woman to serve in that capacity. And I wish her all the best, thank you.
So what time is the Girl Scout?
Next, we have the Commissioner of Public Works.
Is that seven to seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Yes, good evening, just real quick tonight, we're wrapping up our, hopefully we're wrapping up our winter weather season. It's morphing into a very busy spring that we've already been taking care of. Yeah, the, the, the fact that we did not get a lot of snow throughout the winter certainly is not an indication that our roads are gonna be in any better shape. The extreme freeze and extreme cold and extreme warmth that actually tears the roads up more than a real hard winter does. So anyway, we've been out working hard, trying to fill potholes, things like that. I wanna thank the entire DPW team for their dedication and commitment. The Waukele Golf Course is open, we've actually really never closed. So if it's a nice tag and you think the course is open, take a ride out and I'm sure it'll get you out there. Right now, of course, there are no carts, but you can certainly walk the course. And I know somebody who played the other day and he said it's in great shape. Corn's Campground is getting ready to go for the twenty twenty-three. They will be opening early in April. So again, if you're a camper and you wanna go out to Corns, go out there and affect them out. The Parks Department is very busy getting all town parks in shape, of course, including the Little League Complex. I believe opening day in the parade is set for April twenty-second, so we'll be ready for that. We spoke about bolt pickup, postcards are forthcoming, all the information down at the town website. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to us. From the OEM side, of course, things in OEM are going well, we always stay busy. Our OEM coordinator, Joe Andre, has been working with Orange County and all of our five school districts for an upcoming reunification drill. The supervisor spoke about the hyperpools, please sign up for that. That's on the town's Facebook, it's on the website. You can scan the QR code if you need to do it the old-fashioned way, there's a phone number on there and we'll get you hooked up. Lastly, a couple of things, congratulations, one of our DPW employees, Luke Martinson and his wife. They had a new baby girl, Jovi Jean, and mom and daughter are doing very well. And like I said last year during Women's History Month and, you know, basically all the time. Number one, congratulations to all the award recipients. I was again, I was the youngest of five children, four older sisters. And of course, my mom and I grew up in a house with five very strong female role models who I credit with helping me get to where I am today, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Luke, can you touch, I was trying to find a note. We got, recently we just got some great news. Because we had that, that meeting with constituents about the water.
Yes, yeah, so as Councilman Johnson spoke to earlier, our trihalomethane results for February, we're well within the parameters of where we need to be. We have made some system changes. It does not get us out of, I guess we would call it a letter reading campaign. There will be another notification going out, but the notification will be clear that we are trending in the right direction. We did have a great meeting here with one of the communities, Wildflowers specifically. And like I said, anytime if anybody has individual questions on the trihalomethane, aliosidic acid issue, just reach out to us. We did, of course, we're gonna award, we did award a bid tonight for the refurbishment of a couple more of our tanks. Those two tanks are gonna get refurbished similar to what we did in Washington Heights. These two tanks are right about the same age, they're about thirty years old. So what'll happen is we'll go, a contractor will go in there, basically they sandblast and they clean them out. The newest technology now is to put an aerator in the tank so that the water is constantly in motion, so the byproducts can't recreate inside the tank. But the, like I said, the, you know, the folks in the water and sewer department are, they're really busting their butt trying to get to the bottom of this. They're doing a great job, along with our engineering firm. So things are definitely going the right direction. Any questions, like I said, I've got an open door, just stop and say, or give me a shout, thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please, Chief.
Thank you, thank you, supervisor. Just three quick things, so it was a great event the other night with Matilda, enjoying the movie. Rosie, Joe Andre, and Ross, Ross did a great job setting things up, but the audio didn't work, right? And who came to rescue the supervisor, he'd been skillset after about fifteen minutes, he was somehow figured it out, get the sound going. But otherwise, we had a, how we get the whole movie? So may not have enjoyed it as much. So just an accreditation update, so the problem's been under the accreditation process for just one year now exactly. We've added ninety-three policies, so we're seventy-five percent of the way done. We have thirty-seven policies left to go, our target is to knock out five weeks, that being said, we'll be done in six weeks. At that point, we look forward to a ninety-day review period in-house when the state accreditors will come in and audit our systems, our policies and our procedures. The team, including John Desbouchy and Sergeant Dan Ward are doing a great job, great effort. Remember, everyone involved, all the officers are doing policies, town board, county council, we appreciate all the support throughout this process. It's been a long year doing this, we're almost at the end, it's late at the end of the month, so thank you for all the support for this. Lastly, Eric touched on a local mental health conversation, I'll, I'll describe it as that. So there's a problem in our community, it's not just here in Town Waukele. Regionally and nationally, there's many cases where police respond to mental health crisis. We average about five hundred and forty-two incidents a year. So we're in discussion with Mobile Mental Health, who is a great quasi-governmental entity within the county that we and other agencies use to staff our department with mobile health, number, mobile mental health clinicians who will respond with police officers. So we're working on MOU now, the town attorney and their attorney, that we've done shortly. And then there'll be further announcements that's coming up, but this is very forward-thinking, progressive policing. It's certainly something that's necessary here because we'll be working hand in hand with an entity that's already providing services to us. Except they'll be here five days and we eight hours a day. And it's not a choice in the town, it's harder to be coming via state-granted implementers through a separate woman government. So thank her, we thank the board for the support on this and we look forward to rolling this out in the future.
Chief, can you also talk about the program that we just signed up, that we passed the resolution on partnership where we're bringing in, you know, this, this whole thing about policing and getting our police trained to deal with people with mental health and the full training is not always there. And so they need that help and when we try to reach out to those individuals, they're either on call somewhere else. And so Chief and one of the officers presented a program and I'll let you speak on it, but it's going to benefit the town, police department and those individuals that need that help. And it's not going to cost the town. I'll give this part down to you. We're gonna have two individuals onsite, fully paid, with car, and it's not going to cost the town anything, so go ahead, Chief.
It, it's very progressive, it's in the infant stages, trying to work on the MOU to get this rolled out. But it will, it will involve two mental health clinicians that are here five days a week, eight hours a day initially. Program is funded in, in society for a year, so get to develop a policy. But, but Mobile Mental Health has been a wonderful resource for us in our community. There's many occasions where we have somebody who's essentially barricaded, they pose no threats to anyone but themselves. And our policies will take all the time necessary to pull that person out of the place where they are and agree to come with us to, you know, get the mental health services they need usually through current medical centers, behavioral health unit. And Mobile Mental Health has been tremendous resource for us, talking to these people. And in every single case, we were able to get everyone, you know, be the person, I should say, out of the house successfully without any injury to that person or any new officers. So this program helped us expand that, as we mentioned during work session last week. And so I have Mike Ronaldo within the driving force behind this. We wait up to two hours sometimes to get those resources on the scene. It's an incredible drain on our police department, it wastes resources. In addition, obviously, most importantly, it being a greater risk for the person that needs the services, waiting two hours is just unacceptable. The county realizes it, Assemblywoman Gunther realizes, the town board definitely acknowledges it. That's why we're implementing this program because it will speed up the help that's getting to the person on the scene.
Great, it's going to be administered through the town with access supports, which is the entity. I spoke with their council yesterday. And they have something similar they do in the city of Kingston where they provide these types of services. So we're gonna try and take some of the points from that agreement, mold it to what we need for Waukele and hopefully have the, the skeletal part of an agreement that I can present to the board next, next work session or the one after that, so we can move it forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we've got public participation, public participation, three minutes on any item, so. Wanna come up?
Yes. Sorry about that, everybody.
That's okay.
That's all right, so I, I'm Matthew Christian, so in my opinion, we need no turn on red signs on Route two eleven because I walk that little sidewalk fairly often. And I was actually hit by a guy starting to roll and stop, so I wasn't hurt, thank God. But, you know, even I was walking on it today, I saw a guy nearly get run over. So the way it works is there's a little sign, they've got a little sign that says it's safe to walk. But from the car's perspective, it says yield to pedestrians, not stop on red, period. And in practice, like a lot of drivers would just take that license to just start rolling. And, you know, I'm afraid if they're, if they're hitting people, they, they must be, you know, if they haven't killed one or two already, I'm afraid that they're going to. You know, I don't think it'd be too much effort, I don't believe it's a partisan issue. You know, it will not hurt your, your constituents one way or the other, I hope you can fix this very soon, please.
Thank you, I believe Councilman Collins friends with you a dad.
I, I guess they know each other personally.
Yeah, yeah, so we, you came in and we talked, George sent out a, a letter to New York State and have you heard back, George, about it? I have not, yeah.
So like I got the impression that's still kind of within the town's jurisdiction, so that was on it.
It's not, it's a state, state road, unfortunately, it's, you know, and, and we're kinda, you know, our hands are tied. But it doesn't mean that we don't try, we did, right?
Well, it wanted to die at your hands or, or you don't try, I mean.
No, what I can, what we can do is petition basically, you know, ask the state, which is what we've done, we have not heard a reply from.
That's feeling, yeah.
That is, that is very odd, and I'm guessing they're gonna have to take your word for it, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
I don't have to tell you my name because everybody should know it by now. So I just wanna thank the Royal Club, I wanna thank my committee. I'm glad you're out of the hospital, I hope everything's okay. I don't know how much your check was.
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred. Four hundred.
Yes, sir.
All right, that, that helps us out. That helps us out a lot. I just wanna thank you and I wanna tell you that fifty years ago was the war in Vietnam. This year is our anniversary, so if you see a vet, say thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Give me the check. Put it in the check bag.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Good evening, Nick Baia, come back again. The OnlyinWaukele.com website has been republished with updated information. Per our council's request, I put together documents showing classified reports by Waukele officials who allowed illegal access to both Ford's properties. There's a two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar EPA lawsuit against my neighbor Mark Ford. Trial notice beginning May ninth, twenty twenty-three. The proceedings will hopefully shine light on why the DPW, Daniel LaPue and other Waukele officials allowed Mark Ford to dump here at all, let alone building federally protected wetlands and streams. Waukele labor equipment materials were used to create landfill infrastructure for both of Mark Ford's properties. Toxic New York City waste was dumped and buried overnight in front of my house while Ford employees espied Waukele staff. My family's trial against Mark Ford is scheduled for June twenty twenty-three. Superior requests show Waukele inspectors' classified or omitted reports to benefit Mark Ford and McCary's unpermitted operations. George Serrano was made aware of these allegations due to failure discovered in ignored reports. That's why I started coming to public meetings, which so far has not seemed to help. The recent Times Union article reported FBI investigations into the town. After reading that, I realized I have something in common with former supervisor Frankton Dado. We've both spoken to the FBI for hours at length about alleged corruption in Town of Waukele. And the agency I talked to, the Times, reported war federal. We have also both spoken to the Times Union and other news organizations that issue here in Waukele. There's more public exposure to come and you have a chance to get ahead of it still. There's at least one difference between what Frankton Dado told the FBI and what I told them. I reported that George Serrano was complicit in regarding Ford's recent operations that are ongoing. As George stood in my driveway campaigning, he saw the illegal operations site in landfill area with his own eyes while reviewing the OnlyinWaukele.com website. The next day, George was campaigning with Daniel LaPue. LaPue is named by Ford in his EPA lawsuit scheduled for this May. Ford states that Daniel LaPue, as MS four compliance officer, female representative, gave him permission to dump here in Waukele. Ford's disclosure statement that shows this is also on the OnlyinWaukele.com website. George Serrano, that seven months ago, you heard Gary Lake say there is no site claim for the current operations of Ford's properties and you said you would stop at the next day. That was false, I'm still waiting. Ford and McCary's landscaping and unpermitted operations for years while employing Waukele staff and it continues today. Again, OnlyinWaukele.com is the website and I'll update it by time and add more information. The website is many views when it was just republished last week, but those are mainly coming from the World Partners Racing and animal rights activists. There are current horse opening, race fixing, animal rights issues and other things that have ties to what's on the website and the local players involved. Everything is being investigated by the FBI or the proper authorities. It's a shame that Waukele cannot be trusted or investigated itself in some cases. So George, what am I missing? Why can't the building inspector go onto Mark Ford's property and cite the illegal actions and start a paper trail? What am I missing? I'm gonna say thank you, lawyer. I, I feel like somebody's gonna say thank you.
Yep. My understanding is that the building apartment went out there.
That is correct.
Oh, so is anything going on?
No.
Oh, so.
My building, my building probably did go out there.
Did they go out there seven or eight months ago when you sold it? And are they doing anything?
After the last time you came, they went out there.
Gotcha. Okay, I guess I'll further best all the activities that might have happened since, but they're still running unpermitted operations and it's being allowed. Been happening since the toxic waste was dumped in front of my house, happening today.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? That being said, thank you, thank you for coming out, we'll make a, make a motion to adjourn.